A 911, who?
And it's been twenty years because I remember the generator going out one night. That's right.
Ms. Bell, please call for the German of the public safety committee. I'm making the motion.
Say.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mary Hicks.
Yes.
I buy your name.
Bill, please call the roll this half of form for the public works committee.
Captain Greenwood?
President.
Captain Greenwood? President. Captain Molesby?
President.
Mary Hicks.
President.
Yeah, hi, sir.
Yeah, I have to move. Item two is the presentation of amendments from the meeting held on Thursday, February 4, 2016. I'd like to move for the approval. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item four is the presentation of subcommittee reports. There are none. Item five is the presentation of ordinance and resolution. Item five A is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve the option to renew traffic signal maintenance in the city of St. Louis. I'd like to move for approval. Ms. Gerb, would you care to explain this to the council? Let me know.
Good evening, everyone. It's just a resolution to renew, option to renew the traffic signal maintenance. Last year, we had an agreement with what's electrical to repair the traffic signal. And this is just a renewal for this year. Instead of going out for bid again, it's an option to renew in a contract. It would be easier for us to school in and do an option to renew instead of going out for bid again for this year. But next year, we're going out for bid again.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Gerb, for this address that Traffic Light is out on 20th Street?
Oh.
You don't think it's out?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Want to see the traffic light?
Not to repay.
No, I'm just saying, would.
Oh, yeah, they can sell it.
Set services, okay. Would it repair something here?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move for the approval of item five A. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five B is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to enter to agreement with St. Clair County Department to grant the traffic for the city group funds for the continuation of St. Louis Avenue project from 10th Street to 29th Street. I would move for approval.
Okay.
Any questions?
You're going down Sales Avenue from 10th Street to 29th Street, you say?
I believe that's where it's at.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's on Mayor and Ron Molesby Street?
I believe so. That's what we approved for last year.
Last year?
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
I'd like to move for approval. I got a second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five D is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. You know, there's going to be alley maintenance, school maintenance, stuff like that.
Okay. Are there any positions in this? Or is this just for cleanup?
There's no positions in this.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Bell?
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. You know, there's going to be alley maintenance, school maintenance, stuff like that.
Okay. Are there any positions in this? Or is this just for cleanup?
There's no positions in this.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Bell?
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to enter to agreement with St. Clair County Department to grant the traffic for the city group funds for the continuation of St. Louis Avenue project from 10th Street to 29th Street. I would move for approval.
Okay.
Any questions?
You're going down Sales Avenue from 10th Street to 29th Street, you're saying?
I believe that's where it's at.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's on Mayor and Ron Molesby Street?
I believe so. That's what we approved for last year.
Last year? Thank you.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
I'd like to move for approval. I got a second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. You know, there's going to be alley maintenance, school maintenance, stuff like that.
Okay. Are there any positions in this? Or is this just for cleanup?
There's no positions in this.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Bell?
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Mary Hicks?
Yes.
I buy your name.
Item five C is the resolution for the Marion City Council to approve supplemental annual annual motor fuel tax for fiscal year 2016. I'd like to move for approval for the question. Order the question, Chris. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Captain Eastern?
Yes.
Captain Greenwood? Yes. Captain Molesby?
Yes.
Captain Dean?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you, uh, it was amended without the, uh, council approval? Did you do that or who did that? But he just said, the attorney just said...
The line item transfer?
Yeah.
Yes, I prepared the line item transfer and approved it, uh, to be approved by the city managers, under the city manager's authority.
He just said you couldn't do it?
With a line item transfer to approve a contract you came...
Stick it again, attorney, so I, so I head back in here so you can straighten me out.
If there's an increase in salary for an employee that is done in a budget amendment, if there is a contract for less than $10,000, that can be done through a line item transfer and the city manager has that authority to do that without council approval.
But this was a raise. Did you hear?
For who?
No, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking of the raise, I'm speaking...
I'm speaking of the raise. He just said that you can do it with a line item change, but if you're gonna give another employee a raise, you can't do it. You gotta, you gotta be a, a, a request from the council. And you say you did it by a line item change. And the, the city manager okayed it.
No, the line item, the line item transfer was in reference to the contract that council approved in January. The personnel change is a different matter, not, not addressing this particular situation right here.
When it just addressed that personnel change, that's what I'm trying to get to.
City manager, do we have a personnel change?
Yes, we did.
In what department?
We can't, we can't...
Okay.
We keep it open, open, but I want to get it on the floor so we can talk about it, so we can clear it up and be through with it. Uh, I'll get it straightened out. And if we can do it, if we can, we gotta do it in, in closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, can we have a, a, a executive session after, after Mrs. June get through?
We're still waiting.
Thank you both. Okay, thank you both.
Any other questions in reference to the table?
I'm, I'm trying to find out. Uh, if, but I mean, this is the first one you did when it January. I'm concerned about the, the, the $10,000 raise.
That's a totally different situation.
It's a totally, it's, it's a totally new difference. It's a totally new, I agree. So you finish that and then you give it, get, here, explain that next one to me. If you, if it's okay with the mayor or anybody, then I, then I want to know.
This one, right, in reference...
This one here. Uh, I'm on, okay, I'm with that one. But the next one, I want you to explain to...
The line item transfer.
Are they related?
No.
They're not related to this, but...
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion to approve item 5A.
Second.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
3A, 2A.
Item D, an ordinance for the Maryland City Council to convey parcels number 02-18-0-114-04 to the Catherine Dunham Center for Community Development. I'd like to make the motion to approve item 5B.
Move.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Second.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Did I, what's your name, you say what now?
This is to, uh, give a parcel to the Catherine Dunham Center and Community Development.
You what?
No, it's a piece of land.
I think, okay.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
What's your pass?
Item C, an ordinance for the Maryland City Council to convey parcels number 02-18-0-403-032 and 033 to the Arthur Johnson Foundation. I'd like to make the motion to approve item 5C.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
Item 5B, an ordinance for the mayor and city council to convey parcel number 02-16-0-106-005 to the St. Mark Missionary Baptist Church for Community Develop, Development. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5D.
So move.
Second. Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Uh, I'm gonna get, get, let's get us some land.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
Item B, an ordinance for the Maryland City Council to convey parcel number 01-25-0-102-03 to the Greater Liberty Church of God in Christ for Community Development. And this is to give the land. I would like to make a motion to approve item 5E. Second. Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
Item 6, presentation of correspondence and memorandum, there are none. Item 7, old business, is there any old business? Item 8, new business, do we have any new business? Oh, sorry. Uh, item 8A, I'd like to make the motion to go in executive session.
Want to take the citizen's comment first?
Yeah, okay, yes. Item 9, citizens' comments, Ms. Bass, Dorothy Joshua.
Okay, this is the finance committee. I, the only thing that I have to say about this is that finances, uh, well, since you've been a, a councilwoman for a period of time, can you tell me what your responsibilities are as a, as a finance council? First of all, before I fill my cover.
Before what?
Your, uh, what's your responsibility that being on the finance chair?
I thought you said something after that.
Oh, I said, I'll give you my cover when I, uh, learn what your duties are.
Well, my, my, uh, responsibility is to oversee the final financial web health of the city of East St. Louis. I review the purchases, I, I, I have insight into just about all the contracts. I'm copied on them, I review them, and to make suggestions and recommendations regarding what's best for the city of East St. Louis.
Okay, uh, and, and it's my understanding that the ci, the city of East St. Louis is under a lot of financial duress. And that being said, most, a lot of the citizens are still packing up and leaving because, uh, the finances of the citizen, the city of, the citizens of East St. Louis income is roughly $25,000 a year, which the council makes pretty much of that just being council members that's not including other guys. So I think I need to kind of remind you all of that because sometimes you can kind of get out of touch with the citizens when your salary's up so high and the citizen salaries are down there. And that being said, get, uh, uh, you really need to take a hard look at the board of election because that's $400,000 that the city can save or, and, and, and transfer it to the county where the county is only, uh, I think the last, the last where the county will only cost about 60. I think the first initial setup would be maybe 90,000 and then the year after that it would be 60, which still will save the city $300,000 and that's money that can be used for public safety and some other things that the city needs for the safety of the citizens. So I would like for you to kind of look at that area of, of cost saving by the city of East St. Louis.
Well, Ms. Joshua, we're actually needing constantly trying to come up with solutions and best fits for the city of East St. Louis. And I can, I can tell you that we have some great ideas. We'll be brainstorming with the mayor and some other people who are interested in building this city and moving it forward. So you have my word that we are definitely looking at real solutions. And so we want to keep people in this city, but we need the citizens to work with us and, and be behind us as we move forward.
Okay, for the citizens, I'm just a citizen, so, and I'll say this and then I'll sit down. I'm a citizen of East St. Louis, but before I can get on board, I really need to see some real changes. I haven't seen no real changes. And I know that you all only been in office a year and I know with the ex-city manager being here four years, that's kind of a side of what... But in, in the situation it is with the city of East St. Louis, you got to get the ground running. And right now, you, you, you know, the citizens need to see some positive changes before they can rally behind you all and, and for you all to get stuff done for the citizens. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua.
Excuse me, I, I have to go to work, I need, but you know, Madam Mayor, Councilor, I need to know, what are the duties and responsibilities of the township, so, of the county? What, what he gave that all this, what does he get?
I'm sorry, ma'am, you know, this is a, we, we can't answer that. I've been here in the city council. You have to go to the township and ask them.
To township?
Yes, ma'am.
He's not there.
They have their own meetings, they have meeting nights. They have meetings, I don't know what nights they, they meet on, but they have meetings.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the second Thursday of the month at 5:00.
Where?
At the township.
At township?
Yes.
Second Thursday of the month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to go in executive session.
So move.
Second.
Citizens, you can sit here, we'll, we'll retreat to the council.
Thank you. Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Part 2. Ms. Bass? Please call the roll to establish a form for finance committee.
Councilman Dean?
Present.
Councilman Easter?
Present.
Councilman Greenwood?
Present.
Councilman Mosley?
How kind of Mosley, but very good.
Present.
We have four presidents, one at least.
Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll for the Community Development Meeting? I need to move for adjournment. I'm sorry. I make the motion to move for adjournment. Second. We're now, uh, convening, uh, convening the, um, finance committee after coming back from executive session to, uh, discuss personnel issues and other matters. I make the motion to move for adjournment.
Second.
Ms. Bass, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday, Monday.
Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll for the Community Development Meeting?
Councilman Mosley? Councilman Mosley, Councilman Mosley, Councilman Dean?
Present.
Councilman Easter?
Present.
Councilman Greenwood?
Present.
Mayor Hicks?
Present.
We have four presidents.
Item 2, presentation of the minutes from the meeting held on Thursday, February 4th, 2016. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2.
So move.
Are you second in the council?
Yes, second.
Second. Do we have any questions? Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
Item 3, presentation of departmental reports. We have 3A, a monthly report from Employee Services. And we also have 3B, monthly report from TIF Department. I'd like to make a motion to receive items 3A and 3B.
Second.
Madam, Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll, sorry?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
Item 4, presentation of subcommittee reports, we don't have it. Item 5, presentation of ordinances and resolutions, 5A. An ordinance for the Maryland City Council to enter into a redevelopment agreement with Harvest Market for a retail new grocery stores. There are motion to approve item 5A.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
What's your pass?
Item B, an ordinance for the Maryland City Council to vacate Gady Avenue between 9th Street and 10th Street in the city of East St. Louis. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
What's your pass?
5C, an ordinance for the Maryland City Council to convey parcels 01-130-415-001, 003-004 and 005 to the Harvest Marketplace LLC developers for economic development. There are motion to approve item 5C.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
4A is Monday.
What's your pass?
Item 6, presentation of correspondence and memorandum, we don't have it at this time. Item 7, do we have any old business for community development? Item 8, do we have any new business for community development? Item 9, citizens' comments, Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
I just have one question. And can you give me an understanding what the ordinance for, uh, Maryland City Council to vacate Gady Avenue between... What is that about? I mean, vacate, I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't have any other information, so can you help explain that?
Sure, sure. Ms. Phillips, that's for, I'm, I'm calling you up to, um, explaining it at the same time. Uh, the expansion of that market, my understanding?
It's a, it's a living street, so they will use that for the trucks to go into their loading and unloading dock. So when we vacate, they'll have their property in access with their, their trucks.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, Mayor, will you speak on, uh, the death of Pastor Nicholson, when he fell?
Yes.
Isn't that kind of...
Sure. Um, there was a fire February 29th, 28th. Um, Pastor Nicholson was pulled out of his home, but he, he did die, uh, the next day. I'm not sure what his funeral, Councilman, do you know what his funeral arrangement?
No, I, I try to remember myself.
It's Saturday. Visitation is...
It's coming Saturday?
Yes. The funeral starts at one o'clock, visitation is before that, I believe it's 2:00. 10, or yes, it's at the church, between 10 and 12:45, and then the funeral starts at 13:00.
It's Saturday, right? Okay, thank you. That's all, no, thank you. All right, Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I make a motion there.
Second.